View in responding to the COVID nineteen pandemic. And I thought it might be helpful to come in and just give you a quick thirty thousand foot overview. On our major initiatives and and efforts to this point. And make myself available in case there's anything else you wanted me to discuss, any other questions you had. I'm I'm happy to answer those tonight, or if I don't have information. Um, at the tip of my tongue, be happy to follow up with anything that might be helpful. So um, quickly, it's no secret um, to folks now that um, we've been and are still going through quite an experience in our COVID nineteen response. As you know, Dane County was the first county in the state of Wisconsin and the twelfth in the nation to have a positive COVID nineteen test um, appear. A silver lining in that for us was that it did kick us into gear early on. Um, we actually put guidelines in place initially even before the state did and the state soon followed. And we're learning as we look back um, at the the spread of this of this virus throughout the 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 planet. That the earlier you take action, the better your chances. And we have done relatively well as a community um, in in our response and in the results that that we're getting. Um, like most places, we went very virtual wherever we could immediately in in county government. We implemented our continuity of operations planning. There are areas where we still have to be in person, we are. You know, we have a nursing home, we have child protective services, we have law enforcement, et cetera. So we're doing everything in our power to protect the folks who still have to be out in the community. We did lockdown Badger Prairie Nursing Home to visitors early on, and we recently had testing through the entire nursing home. And there were no positives, so we were very pleased um, with that. Um, once we, once we did what we needed to internally over the first few days, we kind of simultaneously moved to survey the community and look for the most vulnerable populations in the community. Um, who were more likely to um, suffer grave consequences if they got COVID or where there was a risk for spread. And the through the homeless community, that was certainly a concern um, of ours, particularly giving this in the sheltering situation. Where um, there was no, there was no ability for social distancing. So we moved quickly to start moving families first and then single individuals with underlying health conditions into hotel rooms. We currently have um, countywide, a little over four hundred people um, in hotels right now. And we're using an alternate shelter for the men shelters, so we're able to achieve social distancing. And then we quickly kind of looked to the needs that are throughout the community. Um, to date, we have about thirty six thousand unemployment claims in Dane County. People have been hit hard, um, people who were having challenges economically before. Um, it's gotten even worse for them and a lot of folks who weren't are now. So one of the first things we wanted to do was look at the basics, food and shelter. So we've partnered with Second Harvest um, Food Bank um, to do to to look at their distribution system and their need. And they were getting and still are um, incredible demand and strain on their system. So we sought to do with Second Harvest in our partnership, excuse me. We created initially a ninety day, three million dollar partnership. Um, that builds a bridge between our local farmers and producers and folks who need food. Because as we've seen, many of the supply chains for our farmers and growers um, have broken down and a lot of the demand they had has. We've seen farmers having to dump milk um, and other issues like that. So we were able to build that bridge and and work with Second Harvest to source the majority of the food they're buying with the county dollars. Um, from our local growers and the first report that I've had back has been that to date ninety five percent. Of the food they procured has been from local farmers and growers. So um, you know, we're keeping our eyes on that program, keeping our eye on the food supply and going to do what we can. Um, to help our neighbors in need when it comes to food. We're also well aware that many local small businesses are suffering greatly um, due to the guidelines um, and and having to be closed or having to do just, you know. Um, pick up and take out if you're a restaurant for so long. So we've also created a small business um, local business relief fund. Um, we've put uh, ten point eight million dollars into an initiative. Um, we partnered with an organization called Dane by Local. Which is kind of the the association group for for uh, local businesses in Dane County. To administer these funds to throw a safety, you know, a a lifeline um, to folks to help them get through some of these toughest times. So that as we begin to ramp back up, there's still a business to ramp up. And to date, we've got a little over four million dollars of that ten point eight out the door and the applications are coming and the money's moving up quickly uh, as we speak. Another piece of that that we've looked at as far as what people are really going to need. As we start returning to um, the new normal and phasing back open the economy is childcare. And nationwide, we're looking at surveys that say up to half of childcare providers could go out of business due to this tent pandemic. Pardon me, I'm losing my voice a little and on Zoom meetings and the phone a lot, as you can imagine. Um, and due to the pandemic, we just can't let that happen here in Dane County. So we went into partnership um, with community coordinated childcare to develop um, a a grant program. For local childcare providers and that's a a three and a half million dollar program. That is going to provide grants to every single one of the licensed childcare providers in Dane County. And based on their size, that that grant will be anywhere from fourteen hundred to fifteen thousand dollars. And we came to that amount, working with the childcare community, looking at the resources that we had available. And the resources they felt would really make a difference in them being able to remain open um, for for the duration. And then again, and then finally, the the other greatest need during a situation like this, when when so many people are losing their jobs and have no money coming in. Um, has to do with housing. So in addition to our work with the homeless population. We've launched a major initiative to help keep renters in their home from becoming homeless. As you know, there's been a a a moratorium on evictions, that moratorium is ending. And so be loo- looking at that deadline, we knew that we had to act soon. To let renters and landlords know that there is help available. So we've launched a program, it's a ten million dollar partnership um, being administered by the Tenant Resource Center. And we we estimate we can help around nine thousand renters this way. Um, to provide eviction prevention relief, to help people who have fallen behind in their rent payments um, to catch up. Um, with this relief money and we want both renters to know about this, we want landlords to know about this too. Um, because if you're a landlord, you're hurting also because you don't have that money coming in to pay the mortgage on your property. Um, but our message is relief is here, it's on the way, this will be approved um, within a couple of weeks by the county board. If you have questions, please reach out to the Tenant Resource Center. It's our goal to help keep people in their homes and help keep them from becoming homeless. Part of this partnership um, also involves our joining forces for families offices. Um, we added another half million dollars to their eviction prevention um, funding. And we have a partnership with Catholic charities through which Catholic charities will be hi- hiring housing navigators. To help connect our people who are in apartments um, or excuse me, who are in hotels right now to apartments. So not only working with landlords and potential tenants to help them find places, but also we have two hundred fifty thousand dollars set aside. To help people with that first month's rent and the security deposit that's needed to get in, that can be so hard to come by. So we're really working hard on the 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 basic needs that people are facing um, during this time as we move toward reopening. Um, as you know, the the Alliance Energy Center has been repurposed. Um, unfortunately, like many businesses, the Alliance Energy Center's business went flat. Um, when this started and it probably will be for a long time. Um, unfortunately, uh, last week we announced we'd have to furlough a number of people. Uh, to at least temporarily from the Alliance Energy Center because there's no money coming in and they're taking quite a hit. Um, but we are using the Alliance Energy Center for a couple of other purposes. We're letting Second Harvest use it as a warehouse and we're providing four refrigerated semi-trailers. Um, to store that local food that they're purchasing to help facilitate that. Um, we're also using it, as you're probably aware, as a testing facility for COVID nineteen, the National Guard is there. And that'll go um, hopefully um, through, we're hoping June twenty fourth. So I'd encourage anyone, whether you're symptomatic or not, if you haven't been tested, to drive on down, you don't need an appointment, go to the Alliance Energy Center, you can get a test. But within a few days, you'll have an answer. It's very important in our work to continue to move forward, that we're able to test enough people. When people are positive, to be able to contact trace um, and make sure people are quarantining. Um, also, boy, we're fortunately, we haven't had to stand it up yet. But the Alliance Energy Center has been mapped out as the location for a field hospital. Should we need one, if there's a surge in cases and we are concerned. Um, due to the fact that the statewide guidelines have been um, were were rolled back um, after the Supreme Court decision a couple of weeks ago. We are concerned about the possibility of a surge. And so what we do in Dane County helps us, obviously helps our residents, but the virus knows no borders. Um, and when we look at one of the the things that we need to be aware of during COVID nineteen, it's our hospital capacity. And UW hospitals in particular are are regional facility. So it's not just what we do here in Dane County. Um, other counties feed into UW Hospital, other states feed into it. So we're keeping a close eye there and for the need, if it should arise, we're ready to stand up a hospital at um, the Alliance Center. Excuse me. So I think from here, I'll talk a little bit about um, the phase one of the reopening that we um, entered the last few days. So phase one has a number of different um, pieces to it, but basically in the in the greatest sense. It allows nonessential businesses to open at twenty five percent capacity. And it requires people to have in place certain systems, certain guidelines, social distancing, hand sanitizer, et cetera. So you know, what what we want to do is we want to be deliberate. We want to take it slow, we want to do it right the first time, we don't want to have to go back. This is a very, you know, a very dangerous virus, it's very contagious. And we know people want to move forward as quickly as possible as do we. But you know, it's a reminder for all of us that this this virus um, is very contagious. It is deadly, there is no vaccine and there's no cure. So we want to do everything we can to protect the people in Dane County. While at the same time, being able to 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 start nudging forward toward reopening the economy. So because obviously there are a lot of, there are a lot of impacts to to shutting down an economy for as long as we have. So we're doing our best to balance that. Um, so far, the cases are remaining in check, um, so far so good, but we're going to be watching the data very closely as we move forward. Um, I think I'll stop there and again, if anyone has any questions or any information I can help you with, I'm happy, happy to talk about it.
Any questions or comments, Jerry?
Yes, thank you, uh, um. Executive Parisi for taking the time for this important update. I uh, had a question over the weekend from a member of the community that I answered and I thought it was a good answer. Um, but they were very unhappy with it. And so I thought I'd just see uh, from Executive Parisi. If perhaps he has a better answer, but it has to do with uh. Worship and congregational worship. Yeah. In your, in in your chosen place. Um, the the person said that they they were limited to twenty five parishioners. And he just didn't think that was realistic and I told him, I said, you know, pretty much what Executive Parisi said. That this is a very contagious virus that uh, we want to keep everybody safe. We don't want people to die because we weren't safe. Uh, but again, they weren't happy with that. Is there something else I should have brought into that conversation, Executive Parisi?
No, I'm really glad you asked that question, Jerry, because a lot of people have been asking about it um, lately. So phase one um, allows for um, mass gatherings, not literally masses and Catholic mass, but a mass gathering, a lot of people coming together. Um, allows gatherings like that to be at twenty five percent capacity of the building in which they're 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 occurring. Now, mass gatherings are different because some people said, well, what about the hardware store, Menards or somewhere like that? Mass gatherings are different than somewhere like that because that's somewhere someone goes in and out of and we're learning that. That that um, that the time spent indoors is a big factor in 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 near people in in how contagious and how good your chances are of getting COVID nineteen. So the mass gatherings, which is any kind of concerts, a religious service, um, a meeting, they're 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 limited to. Um, fifty people, no more, in twenty five percent capacity indoor, right? So if this person's service was limited to twenty five people, I'm guessing maybe the building has a hundred um, person capacity. So that would be the 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 twenty five percent. Um, now we've had questions, some folks say, well, you know, my church has seven hundred seats. And you know, why are, why are we still limited to fifty people? And the reason is a couple fold, it's it's while while you, while you could potentially say you could get a hundred and seventy five, two hundred people in there and still have six feet between them. If there isn't exposure in a case like that, one of the keys to to keeping COVID nineteen in check is. And and this is what our public health department does every day, nearly nearly two hundred employees. Um, is is reaching out to the people who ha- are positive and finding out everyone they've been in contact with. And then getting on the phone with every one of those people and doing what we call contact tracing and letting people know that they were potentially exposed. Um, so that they can self quarantine for two weeks. Because it's at mass gatherings where we've seen the biggest increases, the spikes when that you know, that you get. So if you have a mass gathering of fifty people and there's an exposure. Um, along with everything else, public health is doing and all the the other contact tracing they're doing that day and that week. They will have to go in and contact, tra- trace down who they are and contact those fifty people to let them know they were potentially exposed. So say you're in a, say you're in a, any kind of gathering at church, because this is the example that's been brought up to me a couple of times. Um, and there's a hundred and seventy five or two hundred people there. And there's an exposure, not only is the risk for many people um, contracting COVID increased, but. Once two hundred people are exposed, the public health department has to re- has to identify, reach out and trace and call every one of those two hundred people. So it gets to a point where it begins to overwhelm our infrastructure. Um, you know, I I I know that I'm not sure why, but a lot of people felt they were being picked on. It's nothing could be further from the truth, you know, from from my position as a county executive, I'm responsible. For the health and safety and well-being of over a half million people. And I take that responsibility to bed with me every night and I wake up with it every morning. And we are in the midst of a very deadly and dangerous pandemic. Um, with a virus that is 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 extremely dangerous to our elderly. To people with diabetes, people with kidney conditions, people who who may be being treated for cancer. We're seeing it increase in in a very scary um, syndrome that 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 children get. Um, and can contract from COVID nineteen. And so we're doing our best with with any kind of mass gathering with people's businesses with, you know, whether you're a salon owner or a restaurant. Or at church, we're trying to find that balance between allowing people to something close to, you know, the what normal life was. While at the same time, trying to literally save people's lives and protect them. And we get that people are going to be upset and boy, you know, when you're in a position like mine, the, you know, people mad at you every day. You know, I might, you know, literally the calls range from, I'm not doing enough. To I'm doing too much and everything in between. So we have to strike that balance and in consultation with the public health department. And I'm not a public health expert, I'm not a physician, so I turn to the experts and I turn to them for advice. And if I err in the side of caution, because people's lives are online and I get pushed back for that, you know, I guess. I I'm willing to work with that, but people need to know there, no one, no one in this community is being targeted in any way, or just really trying to keep people safe.
Other questions for uh, Mr. Parisi? Joe, I I have one, do, do you have any sense from your uh, public health department on the status of moving into phase two next week?
Yeah, so what they'll, what they'll do is they'll look at at least two weeks of data, because as we all know now, the incubation period. Um, for COVID nineteen is two weeks. So they'll look at the um, things like that are on the dashboard, we we have the criteria out there. Like the number of cases as well as hospital capacity, et cetera, before they make that decision. Now, it's everyone's hope that they can continue to move up to phase two. But again, that'll be decided strictly on the data and 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 our comfort that we're still able to keep people safe. And that the hospitals have capacity they need and that we're able to trace and let people know if they've been exposed. So we're hopeful, but you know, we'll know when we know and we'll communicate that to folks as quickly as we can.
Sure, sounds good. Other questions, any board members or staff? Anyone want to lobby Mr. Parisi for anything?
Got me, I'm here. Well, and I'm happy to come back anytime or obviously reach out to my office if there's anything you ever need, I'm happy to, happy to help you out.
Yes, well, thank you to you and Scott for being here tonight, we appreciate the update, thank you for being.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
All right, we will move on to item five A, this is the COVID nineteen information and forwarding plan. Phase one, which began on May twenty sixth. Item is uh, item A, we've an update of a Vikings Commission's May twenty seventh motion. Regarding the Commission's spending plan for the federal twenty twenty Cares Act Grant Fund for Elections. Mike, do you want to give us an update on this?
Sure, I think uh, this Candy and I have been talking about this a little bit the last couple of weeks and the the. And I made sure I understood this, but I figured somebody's going to ask me a question about this tonight. The the key thing is that this is not where they're going to mail ballots out to everyone in the state. This is where they're going to be mailing applications to people that did not vote absentee in the last election. And so that that's what this is about and it's going to be uh, grant money provided to the to the village or not to the village, to communities to help. Uh, facilitate the next election. And Candy and a number of of other election clerks were were worried that they were going to make them redo or reorder the absentee ballots envelopes that are not. So so that's, that was critical. Um, so as you can see, there's, they're going to be doing some additional information, particularly reviewing a letter in June, but this is sort of the latest update on it.
Okay. Thank you, yes, Amanda.
Uh, just to clarify, they're talking about sending out that letter to. To registered voters who don't have a current absentee ballot request on file.
And then, and then, and the applications are supposed to go back to the state.
Okay, got it.
So we'll see how this all works out.
David, you have a question?
Just to follow up to Amanda's, I'm assuming then those um. Absentee ballot requests that were filed for the uh, spring elections that asked. If you wanted to get the application or to get the absentee ballot for the primary and the fall election are still valid.
Correct. That's correct.
Anyone else on that one? All right, thank you for the information, Mike.
Sure.
Item C, this is a discussion of possible action regarding cities villages are essential resolution. This is resolution twenty dash twenty, the Village of Oregon, Wisconsin is in support. Of fair, direct federal emergency aid to reopen and rebuild local American economies. We have a recommended motion to approve that resolution, anyone interested in making that motion?
Can you make that motion?
Okay, motion by Ray, or uh, David and a second by Randy, uh, discussion on this topic?
I just said, after you do this, we should go back and do B. We we skipped over B.
Oh, I'm very sorry, thank you.
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, my motion carries. All right, back to but item B. Uh, on May twenty seventh, Governor Evers announced the route, the routes to recovery, local government aid grants. Program to help municipalities and counties cover unanticipated costs related to the COVID nineteen pandemic. So Mike, do you want to give us a overview of how much we can expect?
So we have the potential of getting a hundred and sixty five thousand dollars from the, from the Cares Act via the state. And uh, Candy is going to be our point person on this and uh, it's it's going to be through reimbursements, reimbursements. And so it is like the state's just going to give us some money, we're going to have to go through a process of getting reimbursed, so we're starting to work on that and. And this is, just came out and they still are still working on the applications and everything and so Candy's going to be in the loop on that. So we'll keep you posted as we will move ahead with this.
Okay. So that would cover the cost for like the PPP, PPE that we bought for the elections and.
The the sneeze guards that we put up into three buildings, for example, I think will be covered, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I I've I've seen different lists on what's going to be covered, so we're just waiting to.
Cleaning supplies, disinfection.
Yeah. Yeah, something like that, yeah.
All right. Uh, item D, this is the senior center building. We have a review of Oregon area senior centers operating policies during COVID nineteen pandemic, this is policy one point oh, one five. We have possible board action to approve uh, this policy. Rachel, do you want to um, talk about this a little bit?
Um, what we tried to do in creating this policy was follow the guidelines established by um, public health Dane County and Madison. Um, as as well as look at the um, some of the CDC recommendations. We've had you um, as a board, look at the policies that uh, govern us in all other areas. So I thought it only appropriate that you have a look at this one, which is one of the more unusual ones we've ever had to draft. But um, we feel as though we've covered um, our bases pretty well and I'd be, oop, I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Looks very thorough, questions from board members? Yes, uh, Cory. Yep, go ahead Cory.
Sorry, my computer is uh, glitching here.
Right.
Um, just one question regarding the face masks, obviously that's, you know, um. A very wise thing to do, however, a lot of people, you know, either for medical reasons or for anxiety or for breathing issues. You know, have a problem with that, I guess. Um, do you think that this will adequately address that? And I guess, how are you going to handle, you know, I've seen a lot of instances where this can get very confrontational and how how do we plan on dealing with that? If it if it gets to that and how do we plan on, I guess, thoughtfully allowing people to do that um, if necessary, to not wear a mask, I guess?
Um. As we indicated in the policy, that we will make an exception for people who have a medical reason for not wearing a face covering. So to me, anxiety is a medical reason. Um, post traumatic stress disorder, COPD, uh, dementia where they don't understand, those are all medical reasons and. Um. One of the other things that we think about is besides a a mask or a scarf that actually really obscures people's faces. There are also pretty um, easily made face shields with a halo that goes around here. So we actually have some of those that we're using with our adult day program staff. Because it's much easier for the seniors to hear the staff and to understand what's going on if they can see their whole faces. So we're hopeful that we'll um, not only be understanding of people's potential medical issues. But also be able to offer them some possible alternatives so that they can still feel comfortable here. And maintain a certain level of protection for themselves and for the rest of the people in the building.
Perfect, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions or comments? Otherwise, would someone like to make a motion to approve this policy?
I'll make that motion.
Oh. All right, so I have a motion by Cory and a second by Jenna, how about that?
Sounds good.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion. Oppo- anyone opposed, okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Rachel. All right, this is informational, uh, item five E, the Oregon area garage sale weekend has tentatively been rescheduled for the week of September twelfth. Item F, uh, discussion of possible high school graduation parade on Sunday, July twenty sixth and possible board action, yes.
Sorry, I I was waving, I had a question on the garage sale.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead Amanda.
I just wanted to um. To check, we've rescheduled the citywide garage sale weekend, but in the meantime, garage sales are are not allowed. Under our uh, community policies, that that's still the case, right?
We we don't, we have no control over that.
I don't think we have a policy regarding garage sales.
No. You.
I noticed in the the uh, one of the papers that the circulars that goes out that they're not taking ads for garage sales because it wasn't currently allowed. And I didn't know if uh, if we had a policy about that or.
Nope. It it had to be in compliance with the Forward Dane Plan, I mean, that's that's what I would say, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, that was it, sorry.
Okay, thanks, yep. All right, uh, back to, uh, so discussion of a possible high school graduation parade on Sunday, July twenty sixth. And possible board direction, uh, so Mike, what's, what do we, what are they planning here?
Um, Jenny, do you want to jump in here, maybe talk about this, please?
Sure, uh, a while back ago, uh, Principal Jim Pliner of the high school. Uh, emailed me with the idea of doing a parade. For high school graduates and at the time, we were under the full safer at home order. So there were, were some significant challenges there with uh, keeping everybody in their vehicles, one do a vehicle. We're looking at a large senior class, so again, some concerns. So uh, Parrot now has reached out to, out to me, making the same request, asking if this is possible. Uh, the same concerns relatively still exist. Um. And the concerns are, you know, these are all going to be young drivers. And the concerns are, you know, these are all going to be young drivers for the most part. And I would imagine 100 to 200, depending on who wants to participate in the parade. The parent did advise they're not looking for law enforcement to assist with traffic control. But I'm not sure how that can safely be done if they go through town. They have not chosen a route yet, but the date they've identified would be July 26th between 5:00 PM and 7:00 PM. That's when they were able to work with a local radio station on this idea. And that's when they're available.
Mike, do we, do we have to issue a permit for that? Or how do parades work?
The only time we issue a permit is actually through the county when they do, when they use Main Street for a parade. I think that when we've had other parades in town, we haven't issued a permit. Have we?
It would be a street closure notice, a street closure request, if they're closing any streets.
Yeah. And I think it's, the bigger issue is if we, if this goes on, I had to agree with the chief that I don't know how you do this without police assistance, just for safety, right Jenny?
Yes, and for what it's worth, you know, this is a very unique circumstance and you know, my, my heart goes out to those kids that are graduating. This is supposed to be exciting time for them, but because of COVID-19, we're in this predicament. We are happy to help, but we're also supporting a lot of young drivers, which creates some issues too. And I thought, that's why I reached out to Mike and wanted to work with you guys on this issue to see what your thoughts were as well.
So it isn't this issue, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
This is, giving a permit, that's, that's, that's the easy part. I think it's, I think it's the involvement of the police department and what that would, what that would involvement would look like if we, if it happens.
So Jenny?
Yes. Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead Randy.
I would have a, I would be concerned about it. I think the chief mentioned the cars. I mean, a bunch of people in the cars together or even on the floats. I mean, maybe you could, you know, be six feet apart or whatever on the floats, but I would be, how are we going to enforce that? I mean, they were going to want to have fun and even if they walked on the streets, there's going to be a lot of people close proximity of each other. I'm, I'm a little worried about that.
So Amanda and then Jerry?
Could we, I want to give Chief Pegg a chance to respond to that, but I was thinking something, a modification might be a bike parade.
It's certainly something I could talk to that for a while.
Jerry, did you have a comment? Jerry, you're on mute, so unmute yourself there, buddy.
How's that?
There you go.
I'm just going to bring up the point of liability in the event that there is a COVID outbreak after this parade that the village would somehow be liable, not to mention the risk to life that that would present, but I don't know, it sounds like a, like it'd be a wonderful thing and I, like the chief, I've, my heart goes out to those youngsters because this is a big time in their life and they want to celebrate, but there's, because of this pandemic, they're, they're hamstrung. So again, the only point I bring up is liability.
I guess, even though they might not need a permit, I guess I'm trying to figure out how a parade works when you don't, when you don't block off streets. How, and then I'm, I mean, and then I also worry about spectators being six feet apart. One of the reasons that Summerfest was canceled was that Dane County wouldn't, wouldn't issue a permit to use the county road that made our Main Street for the parade. So I can tell you that Dane County is not going to allow a parade on Main Street.
Interesting. I didn't know that.
Yeah. So I, I don't, I don't know how they do it in a safe manner. I like the bicycle thing, but then again, we still have to close roads. How many teenagers own bicycles these days?
Nobody.
Yeah, that's my only, that's my only question. Middle schoolers, yeah, but once they get to high school, everybody wants a car.
Well, maybe we should do, so Jenny, this isn't for sure going to happen, correct?
Correct. They were waiting for feedback from me. She did, the parent did add that there are, have been other communities that have done this successfully, Barnaveld and Evansville. But I don't know about Barnaveld, but I know Evansville's school class is smaller. And I know that they have a park that they used, which takes them off of the roadway, you know, the commonly traveled roadway, but
I, I think so. I think the bottom line is like, it sounds like the board's saying that they're agreeing with the chief that if it's going to happen, Jenny, that the police is going to, the police department will have to be involved in it. Because we're going to have to be closing off streets for everyone's safety. I think that as far as liability and us enforcing the six feet, that's really not something that we're able to do. I mean, that would be, that would be responsibility of the attendees to follow the social distancing requirements. I think the bigger issue for us would be making sure that the people are not having an accident and pedestrians are safe.
Right.
So what we could do is maybe at this point, Jenny, take that, that feedback to the organizers. Then we, I can put on the next agenda too, if you want to talk about some more. Couple of weeks. Yeah, okay.
All right. Is that enough direction for you Jenny?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right. Item 5G, this is a COVID-19 information release update May 28th. You can see the memo in the packet for further information and this information is also in the village's webpage. Village Hall hours as of Tuesday, June 2nd, staff is available for appointments. And this has been updated from 7:30 AM to 4:30 PM, Monday through Thursday, and then Friday from 7:30 AM to noon. And as a reminder, the board approved Village Hall summer hours at our February 3rd meeting. Any questions on that from anyone? Is that working out okay? Village staff, people making appointments? All right, item two, this is a discussion of village policy regarding the following items and possible board direction. We have park shelters, parks and playing fields, park restrooms and drinking fountains, basketball and volleyball courts. And this is village staff's recommended motion for the village parks and playing fields to remain open for individuals and families, members of the same household, but not for organized practices and/or games by local sports organizations. Reservations for park shelters and/or playing fields are suspended at this time. Basketball and volleyball courts may be used, but individuals may not engage in team or contact sports such as basketball, soccer, football, baseball, ultimate frisbee, with anyone that is not a member of the same household. And the park restrooms and drinking fountains will remain closed at this time. So do you want to have some discussion on this or if someone feels comfortable making that motion?
So Jenny, can I ask Mike, just to, have we had, or the chief, have we had any issues with this at all up to this point? No.
No, no, we've been busy with other calls, disturbances, things like that. So this hasn't really been an issue.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And yeah, go ahead Amanda.
I was just going to make that motion.
Okay, perfect. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jenna. All right, any further discussion?
Yeah, I was just, I was just going to say, you know, we'll keep this in place probably until Dane, the Dane Plan Phase Two kicks in and then we'll go back and review it again. So I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to email this motion out to the organizations in town so they know where we stand at this point with the parks and playing fields. It could be, yeah. And then we'll review it again. Yep.
Okay, so we'll leave the motion as is and then in your correspondence, you'll let the teams know it'll be reviewed at Phase Two. Okay.
Yep.
All right. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Approval permits, we have that for May 19th, 2020. Anyone like to make a motion to approve those?
If we'll make that motion.
Motion by Donovan, second by Amanda. Any discussion on those? All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next is approval of vouchers. We have vouchers tonight in the total of $312,229.18. Someone like to make a motion to approve to get this on the table?
Jenny, Randy, you'll make a motion?
All right, thank you.
I'll go second it.
All right, so a motion by Randy and a second by Bolig. Questions? Jerry, do you have questions?
You know, I don't. I feel like I'm not doing a very good job, but I don't really, this stuff, it's first of all, it's only 300,000, which is about a million short of what we usually have. And second, everything looked to be in order to me.
Okay, yes Amanda.
I had a question. It is item number 12426. Bear Graphics. That was the EL 122 form. I'm assuming those are copies of the, I looked it up, that's the absentee ballot request form. And is that something that, a cost, I'm looking at the date, like there were copies made or something? And is that something we could get reimbursed for through the order, the Wisconsin Election Commission order or something? Someone want to speak to that?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I can, I can ask Candy.
Is that for the envelopes that she ordered?
I'm not sure.
It looks like.
Lisa, do you know?
I was going to say typically.
Yeah, come up on the
Peggy may know.
So typically, we're ordering envelopes from Bear Graphics and they will help us pre-fill some of that to help us move through it a little quicker. So I'm guessing that's what it is, but I'm not 100% sure without checking.
Yeah, I have the invoice here in front of me and it says election envelope custom composition charges and then the other one must be for the actual, that's the 429 amount. And then the other one is actually for the envelopes.
And is that an after the fact, like an invoice for, for envelopes we got for the April election?
I think it's for the upcoming election because the ship date on here is 413.
Okay. So yeah.
I think it's, I think it's for the August and the November elections. I think we were just trying to preorder and that's why they don't want the envelopes to change because we already ordered a whole bunch.
Okay, okay. Now it's, it's clicking. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions on vouchers? All right, Peggy, would you like to do a roll call, please?
Yes. Glish?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Horton?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Bolig?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item A, 8A proclamation and announcements, board comments. Jerry, do you have something?
I do, I do. I got this wonderful report via our illustrious Jeff Rao from Town and Country Engineering regarding the, the study they're doing. And it's like 700 pages long. And I started to open it and I, you know, after two minutes later, I decided, you know, I don't know what I'm going to do with this after I get it open, if it's 700 pages. But is there any way to just hit the high points of that, Jeff?
Well, I would, well, what I would do is I would look at the, at least in the introduction and executive summary on that. I think that's, that's going to be most, keep in mind that probably, I think it's 477 pages. So, and probably 400 of those or 350 of those are likely appendices with just a lot of the supporting information. So I think you can go through the table of contents, kind of look at, you don't have to read it through and through it. We, we put it in your hands basically because we want you to be able to review it so that when we do have our meeting and presentation by the engineer, maybe have some questions by then or something, but they'll go through a whole overview of it when we have our meeting.
Okay, do you have any comments or will you at some point have comments about it before that meeting with Town and Country?
No, no, I'll have comments that, that evening on it.
Okay.
But, but no, I think, and you know, we've had several meetings on it before, you know, on the draft plan. And I've made some comments on there as we look for, you know, options for our future, future and future plant and where we would pump. But yeah, I mean, and keep in mind, it is a fluid document, so it's not, nothing that's terribly set in stone.
It's definitely fluid. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Enjoy the reading.
I, you know, I, I keep falling asleep.
We won't tell the engineers that.
Any other board comments at this time? All right, staff comments. With some upcoming meetings, do we want to talk about that we need to reschedule a meeting?
Yep.
All right, so yeah, we need to reschedule the June 8th meeting to either the 22nd or the 29th because the engineers couldn't make it on the 8th. Is that correct?
Correct. Yep.
So does one of those dates totally not work for anyone? Yeah, Jerry?
Does that mean the June 8th meeting is canceled?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So everybody could do either date? Jack, which date do you think is best for you or engineers?
Well, it depends on, you know, now that you have it, if you feel 21 days are, are good enough for you to review or if you would like that extra week to review. I'm good either way. I know our engineers would be good either way.
All right, well, how about, I'll throw out the 22nd. Is that okay with everybody?
Let's do it. Yeah.
Good?
Okay.
All right, I'm going to put that on my calendar before I lose it. All right, excellent. Okay, and then, so at the June 15th board meeting, we're have a joint meeting of the library board to review fundraising status. And we'll also be scheduling our August budget meeting. And then we have some other dates there. Other comments, Mike, anything?
Nope, that's just meeting dates.
Okay. Right. Then I'm going to move on. Ruben's ready. Okay, so item nine, communication miscellaneous business. Item A, Police Chief Peggan Cops review of Dane County Chief of Police Association's statement regarding George Floyd's tragic death and Oregon Police Department's reaction to the incident. So we have a memo that was added to the packet from Chief Peggan Cops. So Jenny, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Shortly before, I would say Monday afternoon, several Oregon community members reached out to me to ask if I was going to speak at a town hall meeting. And that police chiefs from Dane County were invited to speak. I reached out to the Dane County Chiefs of Police Association and learned that the committee that they have, and it's highlighted there in that letter in front of you, the United Way Law Enforcement and Leaders of Color Collaboration was going to attend that meeting on behalf of all members of the Dane County Chiefs of Police Association. So I, I sat and I watched, though I thought it was important to our community members that I watch, learn and understand the situation as best as I could. This letter from the Dane County Chiefs of Police Association signed by Kristen Roman, I fully support. As stated in the email to Mike, I was asked for, to provide input if I wanted and my input is in that letter as well. Um as stated in the email to Mike, I was asked for, to provide input if I wanted and my input is in that letter as well. Um and my further input is in a, a statement I'm happy to share with this group now if you would like.
Sure, yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna read it here. Um, this is the regarding Minneapolis Police Incident. All members of the Oregon Police Department were devastated to see what unfolded regarding the actions of the Minneapolis Police Officers involved in the death of George Floyd. Our thoughts and prayers are with George Floyd's family and friends. Communities put their trust in the hands of police to keep them safe. The act that occurred in Minneapolis has shaken community members in our village and more broadly in the nation. We recognize this strategy tragedy will only create and heighten fear. I watched the town hall meeting held by the Dane County Girls and Boys Club to listen to concerns, fears and anger. Several of the areas addressed with police chiefs were the police department's use of force policies, diversity within police agencies, training and overall culture of law enforcement as it pertains to people of color. We have discussed the Minneapolis Police Incident internally and these actions do not align with the Oregon Police Department's mission and core values. We will continue to pro- provide our staff with beneficial training and resources. Staff will be completing the following training. The first training, fair and impartial training. Due to COVID nineteen, there has and is no in-person police training being offered at this time. The fair and impartial online training will provide each sworn and non-s sworn staff member of the Oregon Police Department with an understanding of the science of bias, discuss the negative consequences of letting hidden biases impact perceptions and behavior and teach law enforcement professionals the skills that they need to reduce and manage their biases. This training is offered through community-oriented policing services. This training will be completed by June eighth, twenty twenty. Second training, pressure, pressurized people training. Recognizing and implementing force mitigation opportunities, all sworn staff are currently working through this training and the training is offered through Caliber Press. The following is a detailed description of that training. The training provides a realistic perspective for police officers and other first responders concerning how to deal with people who, for various reasons, are at the moment exhibiting charged, irrational and disruptive behavior. The deadline for this training is June ninth, twenty twenty. Training also includes actual de-escalation, force mitigation opportunities, three hundred and sixty degree communication skills and understanding, recognizing and dealing with people who have mental and emotional issues, avoiding counterproductive content behavioral loops and having a professional goal of defining and focusing. The training then explains the need to recognize force mitigation opportunities during emotionally charged moments, utilizing three sixty communication skills and an understanding of human emotions. Discuss, students will learn how to control, redirect and influence other people's immediate behavior in an effort to avoid the need to use a force. The training focuses on the need for first responders to control themselves and understand how human beings interact. The seminar addresses the impact of stress on the brain, the importance of understanding how to read people in the moment, learning how to lower the temperature of an interaction and focusing on your professional goal and not getting stuck in a content behavioral loop. The third uh is a program that we're going to offer, so Officer Wellness Program. We are in the approval process for implementing an officer wellness program through Healthy Minds. There are three parts to this program which we plan to implement. The first are annual wellness checks. These entail each employee of Oregon Police Department, sworn and non-s sworn, going to Healthy Minds for a confidential individual consultation check-in. Guided by a mental health professional, wellness checks provide law enforcement staff the opportunity to jointly assess work-life balance as related specifically to the unique nature of law enforcement career. Individual life management skills are promoted to aid officer staff wellness and healthy adjustment to a career involving accumulated vicarious trauma. Once the partnership exists, each employee will be required to attend a yearly check-in. The session will be on-duty time and consist of an hour. We will also have a program rollout training for the wellness checks. The training will be provided to all Oregon Police Department staff regarding the implementation of the annual wellness checks. The third component of the officer wellness program is a supervisory training. The training will cover the role of law enforcement supervisors in recognition, management and wellness outcomes for officers experiencing vicarious traumatization. The training also addresses policies and implementation strategies related to a structure and role of peer support officer teams. Post-incident training covered is critical incident response and supervisory consider- considerations in the management of PTSD in law enforcement. The steps above are small in comparison to what still needs to be done. We will work in cooperation with our community to proactively identify and address areas of needed improvement and to continually provide the level of service and safety deserved by our village is its residents and visitors.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, go ahead.
So to add to that, I just have a list of a few other things. Um after writing this statement, I've had a lot of meaningful conversations with our employees. I will tell you, our sworn staff is angry that our profession would be represented the way it was in the death of George Floyd. I have helped write our mission statement and core values and I can assure you that our officers take those very seriously. They agree with me that these positive changes are due. More are coming and they want to be a part of them. I've been approached by several of our staff members asking how they can help, what they can do to help us grow and build this trust with our community that has been destroyed. Um. And I know most of you are aware of the protesting and rioting that's kind of occurring up in the city of Madison. We, as an agency, have been assisting the city of Madison. We have what's called a set team, essentially a crowd control team. We're not a large department, so it's only a, a few of us. Um, I have sent two of our officers up. They went up Saturday night, Sunday night, and they are deployed as we speak right now assisting again with crowd control and the rioting. The city of Madison Police Department is also concerned that they don't want to leave their officers alone, so we when we have the staffing available, have been sending staff to assist, riding along with a Madison officer to help keep them safe. And this will only occur when we have adequate staffing. Uh ma- many of you may have heard last night, some of the rioting stretched out into other suburban communities.
It's six o'clock.
Our sergeant, who was on duty at the time, was monitoring social media and was aware this was about to happen and immediately deployed officers on the road to be vigilant of this coming into our community. Those efforts will continue. We will have adequate staffing on at all times. Uh several of us have received phone calls already from concerned community members that these people violently protesting or rioting. Uh they're concerned that they will come into our community. I want to assure you, we are doing everything we can to protect this fine community. We have received no direct threats at this time uh towards Oregon. Again, we will monitor. Does anyone have any questions?
Yes, Jerry. Jerry, unmute yourself, please.
I'm sorry, I should remember that. I um, first of all, I want to thank Chief Pagan Cops for her efforts to, in keeping our, and the staff for their efforts in keeping this community safe and incident-free. Um, the first question is, has the pandemic caused an increase in uh unusual or even usual uh activities? Illegal activities?
Yes, I would say um what stands out the most to me is the increase in domestic abuse and disturbances.
Okay, thank you. Um, and the second question, and this is a minor question and I hate to even bring it up, but it's about the cost. When you send somebody to assist like the city of Madison, and I, I'm all for that, I think it's a great plan. Is there, do we get reimbursed for that anyway?
No.
Okay. That's fine. Continue to do what you feel is best, Chief. Thank you.
Jerry, Jerry, I think that's considered mutual aid, because if we had issues here, they would, they, they've come here in the past, yep.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to ask that, though, and just, because that's what I do.
Or, yeah, Cory, go ahead, then, then Randy.
I guess I would like to express my sincere um appreciation for all of the law enforcement that are doing the job and doing it right. And I really appreciate Chief, what you've done in, in looking into what can we do to be a positive example. Um and I encourage you to continue to reach out and engage with our community and get their feedback to see because ultimately their perception is, is very important and um but boy, oh boy, it's a tough day in age to be a police officer and I really appreciate what you do in the manner that you do. So thank you.
Thank you. Randy?
So, so Chief, I just want to say you're great. Thank you very much. Great update and, and all the stuff you provided and as Cory and others, um, thanks to you and the officers for keeping us, we can sleep at night, feel safe. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Randy. And yes, Jenna?
Uh I just wanted to echo the sentiments of thank you for saying, for those statements that you issued to Pankoff, um, I think means a lot to our community and it's, thank you.
Yes, I um, thank you for your leadership, uh Chief Jenny. I I think that we are in very, we're such how am I gonna say this politically correct? We are in very good hands and I think we are in a better place than we would have been otherwise, so I very much appreciate you and your team. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Alright, well, keep us updated. Um, if there's anything that you need from us or just please reach out to Mike and Mike can alert us and whatever, whatever support you need.
Thank you.
Alright, item uh nine B, thank you to Oregon Cares for their one thousand dollar donation to the Oregon Police Department for the purchase of Narcan. Mike, can you remind us what Oregon Cares is again?
Jenny, do you want to do that?
Or yes, anyone?
I'm sorry, was it me?
Yeah, just um can you remind us what Oregon Cares is?
Uh they're a fantastic program, I'll tell you that right now. I uh, we've worked with them on quite a few projects um just addressing uh youth with alcohol, uh abuse uh and any sort of substance abuse, just really trying to get to the root of the problem. And anytime we, as a police department, have needed money to purchase things to help people, Narcan being one of them. Narcan is used in any sort of opiate overdose. Um Cynthia D. Camilli and Amy Miller, who had that program, they, they offer to help every single time. And I can't thank them enough. I've always looked forward to working with them. Um, and we've, we're always trying to tackle some of these difficult projects of trying to end uh the abilities of the youth getting a hold of alcohol, medications, things like that. So very generous of them to donate this money.
Okay, thank you for that update.
I asked a question.
Yes, please.
Sorry, I saw you weren't looking at him.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, uh, so we had uh on the vouchers um an approval for four hundred fifty-five dollars worth of Narcan for the police department. I'm, and this is like a thousand dollars. I'm just wondering, um, do you buy it batches? Does it expire in six months or how, how does that work?
Yeah, it expires and we, the expiration date comes up fast, so um Oregon Cares was willing to donate a chunk of money so that when it gets close to expire, we can order that next batch sooner than later.
Perfect, thank you.
Alright, moving on to item nine C, this is an update regarding the Anderson Community Garden site. So this is exciting. There's some opportunity here for folks that want and need some gardening space. Um any questions on this? We appreciate them keeping us in the loop. Thank you for that. Uh item nine D, we have a letter from the Oregon Youth Center, this somewhere.
And Jeannie, and, and this one, um, they're, they're thanking us for the eighteen thousand dollar gift. We actually gave them twelve thousand dollars.
Oh, no.
We caught that today.
Okay, did, hopefully they know that, right?
I'm, I'm gonna actually email the new director and welcome her to the village and make sure she knows that for the record.
Do you think once um things uh get back to a little bit more the way they were, should we invite the new director? Come to the, to a village?
I'm gonna do that, yep.
Make sure that she um feels welcome and part of the community.
Yep, I'm gonna do that.
Okay. Any questions on that letter?
So, so Jeannie, one, one of the confusion Mike might be is that when we raised money for them, we got some donations over five years, so they may just be confused because there were a couple that donated two thousand for five years. Maybe there's some confusion there.
There could be, yeah, thanks.
They just think it comes from us.
Yeah.
Which is, which is fine.
Alright. Moving on to item nine E, this is a discussion on possible action regarding Oregon Area Historical Society's request for nine hundred eighty-one dollars to purchase a plaque for their red maple tree at the pump house. We have recommended motion to direct village staff to include this in the twenty twenty-one budget. Would anyone like to make that motion? Yes, Amanda, Amanda's making the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
And second by Randy and this um, Mike, this, we're not paying for the whole thing, right? This is a partnership project?
That's, that's correct, yep.
So, so Je- Jeannie, can I ask Mike, Mike, you know, we have a HPC fund that we have purchased plaques before. Do we not have, is there anything in that fund that could help? It's zeroed out? Okay.
We, we need a budget for this.
Okay.
Uh, so I don't have a motion yet, right? Do I have a motion?
You do, you do, yep.
Yeah, I, I made it.
Oh, okay.
And then Randy.
Alright, Peggy, you have that? Good, because I don't. Alright, any, any further discussion? Yes, Amanda?
I, I was just gonna say, I, I like this idea and despite our budgetary uh issues that we know we're gonna have next year because COVID nineteen. I feel like, I, I love the sentiment behind this and uh it, it's got some historical importance and um I just wanted to clarify that, that, that's why I, I like this idea a lot, I, or carry this forward.
Thank you, thank you. Any for other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Alright, so item nine F, we have a discussion on possible action regarding a proclamation honoring Dr. Brian Bustler for his dedicated service on the library board and to the Oregon community. So would someone like to uh make a motion to approve this proclamation?
Jeannie, I will. Randy?
Alright, we have a motion by Randy and a second by Jenna. Um, Mike, you wanted maybe to talk a little bit about why we're doing this and?
Sure. Well, Dr. Bustler is a, is a special person, in my opinion, and uh we, we felt the library board, Jennifer and I thought the library board and the village board should, should recognize Brian's service uh on the library board and help us guide us through on the library board and help us guide us through a number of important issues, particularly getting us to the point of building a new library. But also just what he's done for the communities, he's been a wonderful community leader, and we just thought we should recognize him for on his retirement.
Excellent. Any, any other comments?
Can I just add that he's been a great perspective on the library board since I started about two years ago? And he he brings a really positive perspective. He thinks through things very well, is very transparent and just really tries to work collaboratively to resolve any any concerns that come up. So we really appreciate his his time and service.
Thank you, Jennifer. All right, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. So Mike, will you deliver that to him or how will he, how will he know about this?
So we're gonna do is we're gonna ask you to sign this, Jenny.
Oh, good.
And then and then we're gonna have Jenny sign it at the library board meeting, and then we'll get it to the school board for their meeting on the 15th. So I believe that's Brian's last meeting date. That's that's why we're doing it tonight.
Okay, that sounds good.
Yep.
All right, item G, discussion on possible action regarding a request to execute addendum to Dane County 2020 purchase of service agreement. We recommended motion to approve a denim with it's $20,000 to the Dane County 2020 purchase of service agreement.
David will make that motion.
Thank you, David.
Second.
Second by Bali. Any discussion on this? Questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
This is item H, FYI, at the July 13th, 2020 village board meeting. We will have a discussion with senior traffic engineer Lee Gibbs from SRF Consulting Group regarding the intersection control evaluation study of Janesville Street and South Prairie Parkway. This is something that I know we were gonna do a few months ago, but then COVID-19 arrived. And I think it's smart to give the public some notice of this, so they want to join the Zoom meeting on that. And that would be a good thing. So it's hard to have public information sessions in this day and age. But any, any way that we can get the word out maybe about that would be a good thing because
Sure.
we know that's been important to a lot of members of the community.
We'll ask Candy to maybe put out a thing on on Face on Facebook, just notifying them of that.
And then maybe Mike, it could be like towards the front of the agenda, so people don't want to sit through an entire village board meeting. Is that okay?
Yeah. Yep, oh, yeah, it'll be at the top of the agenda, yep.
And I'm sure Lee doesn't probably want to sit there for three hours either.
Yeah, he'll be under public appearances.
Okay, cool. All right, so item I, we have a discussion on possible action regarding tremble GPS receiver and accessories. Then we're recommended motion to approve the procurement of the tremble R2 unit from Seeler Geospatial in the amount of $5,432. Have a motion, please. Motion by Jerry Bolling, perhaps? Maybe second by Amanda. All right, discussion. Jerry, do you have a question? Oh, you gotta unmute yourself, Jerry.
We're gonna make a T-shirt that says, Jerry, unmute yourself.
You you get right on that, Jeff. I, is this budgeted or is this something that's coming out of another fund?
No, this is, this was, you know, this is part of our equipment budget for under the utilities. And and yes, we've we've kind of had this on our radar for a while. But yeah, but it's coming out of the general fund of both the water and the sewer utilities split 50%.
Thank you. It does say that in this overview too.
Yep.
I just wanted to know if you were following along.
All right, any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, item J is, yeah, you're welcome. Discussion and possible action regarding approval of 2020 and 2021 renewal of alcohol beverage licenses. Board members remember that Ace's main tap, LaRocas and Senior Peppers failed their compliance checks on February 8th, 2020. So there's quite a bit of information in the packet. If you haven't already reviewed that, maybe you want to review that. Well, I'm just gonna read, I'm not gonna read everything that's in the agenda, but I'm gonna at least read the businesses and the agent names. So I'm gonna get through that and then we'll have discussion and action. How's that sound? All right. So we have, we have class A beer. This is a fermented malt beverage and class A cider only. So we have the Quick Trip 302 with Agent Tonya Fitzsimmons. We have the Quick Trip 372 with the Agent Adam Larson. And we have Quick Trip 731 with the Agent Carol Lockard. And we have the Stop and Go at 856 Janesville Street. Agent is Andrew Bo. All right, so then we have class A combination. This is fermented malt beverage and intoxicated liquor. We have Bill's Foods. Agent is William Faust. We have Man C, the LLC. The agent is doing business as Man's Liquor. The agent is Man, yeah, Man to have some of them. And then we have GL Richards Meats and Deli and the agent is Richard Wisdom. We have class A intoxicating liquor. This is the Chocolate Caper. And Quicks Corky's Custom Bakery LLC and the agent is Daniel Donahue. We have class B combination. This is fermented malt beverage and intoxicating liquor. We have headquarters. Agent is Jimmy Bush, legend at Burgermont. Agent is Jack Goudian. And we have Senior Peppers. The agent is Maggie Richter. We also have Mulligan's Bar. The agent is Steven Alt. Oregon Bowl. Agent is Chad Hendrickson. Ace's Main Tap. The agent is Bridget Ace. And Charlie's Main Event and the agent is David Heidi. We have class B fermented malt beverage and classy wine. We have LaRocas Pizzeria. The agent is Vito LaRocca. Maria's Pizza. The agent is John Indalaccado. We have Firefly Coffee House. The agent is me, Jeannie Carpenter. So when we vote, I will have to have to remove that from a motion. And we also have Ziggy's Barbecue Smokehouse. The agent is Terry Leader. And lastly, we have the class B fermented malt beverage. We have Orcon LLC, doing business as Pizza Pit. The agent is Jennifer White. We have Polly's Grill and Cafe. That's inside the ice rink and the agent is Ben Howard. So anyone wants to make a discussion, have discussion or make any sort of motions? If you make a motion to approve, I would appreciate if you took out perhaps the class B fermented malt beverage and classy wine. And we'll put it on separately so that I can vote on everything else. If that's okay, is that okay, Mike?
Yeah, that'd be my suggestion, yep.
So so Jenny, can I just make a comment before?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so I just wanted to go back up and and Mike and I talked about the the three who failed the compliance, your Aces, LaRocas and Senior Peppers. And the only thing I would say after talking to Mike is that when maybe when the appropriate time, when it's appropriate, after we sort of get things get back up and running, they probably maybe lost staff or whatever. That we 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 do follow through with having him come and have a conversation with us.
Yeah, I think I think that's a reasonable request.
Okay. I don't know how others feel about that.
Other, other thoughts? Yes, Jerry. Oh, Jerry?
Yes.
Jerry, did you have something?
Yep, I'm.
Oh, you're still muted there, Jerry.
Holy cow, okay. So I agree with Randy, but I don't want to do anything right now that might compromise someone's business either. So I mean, I don't want to drive somebody out of business with this. But I do think in the future, we have to have some kind of a penalty for the repetitive frequent flyers that keep violating our laws.
Amanda?
Uh, yeah, I I would concur with with Randy and with Jerry. I just wanted to add that I did have a conversation with Chief Pagan Pop too. We we can look at many things that affect license, not just these clients' checks. You know, we can look at number of police calls related to over serving, which is another issue. You know, the the place of last drink for for people pulled over for DUIs and, you know, there's, there's other data that we can use to get a bigger picture of what's going on at an establishment. I think Chief Pagan Pop is doing a good job having an officer as a liaison for each place that has a liquor license that serves as a resource. I see a lot of positive things happen happening, looking at the the 10 year, going 10 years back. You can see where people had failed a few in a row and then they started passing, which shows improvement, which is good. And then the only other thing I would say is that there are, when when it comes time to renew license, we can put conditions on them. So if we know that there are bad actors, relax, better term here. We can put conditions on the license, something like, just to, for instance, that Madison did was putting create, making an establishment use an ID scanner. When people come in on busy nights, when they don't have time to check IDs, they can just go, you know, under the the bark, you know, check the barcode and it'll tell them right away whether that person is of age or not and and then just verify a quick look at the picture to make sure that it matches that person. And then there's an electronic record which would serve serve them well if somebody is drinking there and then gets in a car and an accident. And is underage, that just we can go back to that establishment, say, you know, what happened here? And they could say, hey, we scanned the ID. Here's the data right here. And he was using his older brother's license, so even though he was 19 or then. That would, that's a way to help businesses and show that they're doing their due diligence too. Just, this is just one example, but I just want us to be also thinking outside the box a little bit and knowing that we can put conditions like that on liquor licenses. Going when we renew them and we we should use all the tools we have to get people to comply.
Thank you, Amanda. Yes, Jenna.
Um, I agree with or echo what the other trustees are saying in regards to having conversations with, from my perspective, at least two of the businesses that have failed this last round when I was looking at the list, which I greatly appreciate that being provided to us. I was a little surprised. I mean, you you recognize these names as they come up your rear, but I was surprised that Ace's main tap had failed 75% of their checks in the past four years. And Senior Peppers have failed 50% of their checks in the past four years since 2020. And that, I mean, that's a lot. So, so, yeah, I would like to have conversations with them and see how we can change that pattern.
Thank you. Others, any other comments? If if we're interested in approving these, would someone like to make a motion perhaps excluding the class B fermented malt beverage and classy wine?
I'll go move that.
Okay, so a motion by Bali, a second by anyone?
Bush.
Bush, okay. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, okay. And then I will abstain from the second vote. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the class B fermented malt beverage and classy wine licenses?
I will do that.
Okay, so Bali or motion by Bali and a second by Amanda?
Sure.
Okay, any discussion on those? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? And then abstain, I will abstain. All right, so Mike, you have some direction on that then?
Yes, yep, thank you.
Yeah. So I think that was, that was a good discussion, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, item K, village residents interested in serving at any of the following committees, commissions, boards should submit a completed village application to village administrator Michael Grace. Applications can also be obtained on the village website or by calling 835-3118. We have seats available on the Oregon Fire and EMS District Joint Board on the park board. And we're also looking for a student member, which is a voting member for the park board. And then also the police commission, so would encourage residents to apply for those and probably be making some appointments later in the summer. 10 report of committees, we don't have any. 11, we have no minutes. 12, we have no unfinished business. 13 is new business, item A. We have, right, we have nothing under item A. Item B is approval of pending renewal operators licenses. This is, these are recommended by the police department. Mayhands Liquor, Shivanti Mahendran. Quick Trip 302, we have several. These are all from Quick Trip 302. We have Devon R Fitzgerald, Charles R Beiler, Cody J Barrow, Lisa M Skoloski, Tanyan A Samu and Mary Ann Rollins. Would someone like to make a motion to approve those, please?
David will make that motion.
Great, it's motion by Donovan.
Jacobson, I'll second.
Second by Jacobson, thank you. Any discussion on these? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have nothing under C. Item D, we have approval of pending renewal operator licenses. And and this is regarding headquarters for Marcia A Scott. There was a memo provided by the police department. And our village administrator is recommending approval of the operator license. Right. Anyone like to make a motion to approve that license or would you like to have some discussion?
I have a comment.
Okay, yes, please, go ahead.
I talked to Mike about this too. I was looking at the the memo and I, so Mike, correct me, correct me if I'm wrong. But I think your your recommendation is basically based on these things that were left off or whatever. These are really not alcohol related.
Right, and it's and also too, it's a renewal. It's not a brand new license. So for a number, number of reasons, why, why the applicant didn't put these on on your renewal application?
Because I think like you had told me previously, she had put them on.
But I.
This time.
Yeah, I believe she did, because otherwise it would, it would have came up last time, so.
Okay.
But you're, but you're right, they're not related to serving alcohol, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Anyone interested in making a motion to approve this license?
Jacobson.
Okay, so a motion by Jacobson and a second by Gless, Jenny, for their discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have some future agenda items on there. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. They'll move. So many. All right, so I think we got a motion by Amanda and a second by Bali to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, good night, all.
Thank you.
Night, see you guys.